I'd like to call the Township Board of Trustees a adjutant for September 10th, 2013, to order. William Julius and the police.
You're right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call on the board.
Trustee Ertler?
Present.
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Giesman?
Present.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Here.
Supervisor Tusher?
Present.
Let the note, uh, record and note that Clerk Blau is in attendance also.
Pardon me?
Let the records note that Clerk Blau is also in attendance.
Oh, okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of August 13th, 2013?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing now, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Present.
Motion carried.
We have several communications, the first of which is from the village of North Riverside. They wanted to thank us for all the contributions, including the beads that we supplied for the Fourth of July festivities at the town hall for them. Also, in addition, they wanted to thank, a big thanks to the Riverside Township Band, that the concert was great, and that we, uh, they are very proud and grateful to Riverside Townships for all the contributions that we make to them. Second correspondence is from Controller Judy Bartipinka. She thanks you, Rich, for the nice write-up about Controller's critters in the Township's newsletter, and she's hoping that the article will stir up some more contributions. There was 1,800 adoptions made since the program started in 2011. Aging Care Connections thanked us for purchasing their full-page ad for their 42nd annual luncheon, and also, we got a news release from the Riverside Police Department thanking us for the purchase of their, I believe it was lights?
Electronic, uh, mileage.
Yeah, and they thanked us for, uh, the board for our grant, so they could purchase them.
And they see what's that?
No, I have not.
It's across from Presbyterian Church over here, and there, basically.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, I think it's on a lamppost. It's right where they used to keep the, uh, that big, big machine to do the speed, but...
Okay.
That concludes the correspondence for this evening.
Any visitors' remarks? No visitors' remarks, no visitors. Supervisor report, thank you for covering for me while I was ill in the hospital, appreciate it. Trustees' report. Health board report. Got anything else?
Well, the, there were lots of things in the package, yeah, reports from the different agencies. Yeah, we don't meet in July and August.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So, whatever you got on paper is...
Going to Tahiti, huh? They also go off to Tahiti?
No.
The big money they make that we give them, right? Zero bucks.
Right.
Okay, old business. Riverside Township Society Grant, I believe this came up last month?
Yes, and there should be in your packet, a, um, our budget for the year, and what we spend it on. We had a good meeting yesterday, we had a little more than 20 people there, and I had about six new faces, and Kay Snyder and Robin Mooney from Arcade Jewelers in town came and gave a presentation, and people could bring their jewelry, and they would do an on-the-spot appraisal.
Does Kay still do appraisals of antiques for people?
I don't...
I saw that a long time ago on one of the government channels.
Yeah, she used to have her own show, but I don't know now if she does antiques. She does jewelry, and she's really good at it. There were, we had everything from original dime store jewelry to something worth $50,000 yesterday.
You're kidding?
No, uh-uh.
Fifty thousand?
Eight thousand, yeah, and she, uh, she would take a piece and say, you know, "Bring this in and let us gold-plate it, and then you can wear it every day."
Yeah, except you might get mugged.
Um, bring us your, you know, so it was really a good meeting yesterday, I think everybody enjoyed it.
Any questions, concerns?
Well, I'll go ahead, man.
I have one question. How does this budget compare to the actual expenditures for the past year?
Well, I don't know, I only took over in January, so actually, it's, um, probably a, um, a little bit less, because last year, they had a group three times that cost $400, and I had them in March, it cost me $500, or it cost the seniors $500, and I'm not having that group back again.
Okay.
Uh, my question, Ida?
Yes.
My question was, last year, we issued this grant in May, and you've given us this report for the, looks like the calendar, what would be the calendar year, 2013, so do we assume then that your next request will be at the same time next year?
Yes.
And not in May?
Correct.
So what we approved tonight will be for the calendar year of 2013?
It will be for 12 months, well, yeah, from...
For 2013 and 14.
2013 and 14.
Oh, I have a question here. Don't we have to make a motion and have it seconded before we have discussion on any of this?
Well, no, we can just have questions. Now, do I hear a motion?
Well, I thought we had to make the motion second before you could discuss this, but I'll make the motion that we grant the Riverside City Citizens Society, $5,000 for their programs and refreshments.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other more questions or concerns?
Well, I'm still not clear, so...
Okay.
So, the $5,000 would be for calendar year 14, 2014, is that correct?
It's for the rest of 2013 and the first eight months of 2014, so I'll re, I'll request again next August.
Is that how your fiscal year runs?
No, our fiscal year runs from January to September. I mean, January to December, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, 'cause it looks like you've really taken this all the way through to December, and you're just, um, total for the year 2013 is shown in 4498, which is five, four, you know, $5,000, basically, it's $500 short, so that's why I thought that you were looking at a calendar year. So, these are not all your anticipated expenses through the end of this year?
Through the end of the year 2013?
Yeah.
Yeah, these are my anticipated expenses.
Because of projections.
And then, and then we'll go into 2014.
Right.
With the remainder of what's left?
With the remainder of what's left, yes.
Okay, so, I guess I'm going back, and technically, the grant could be for the calendar year 2014, 'cause you still have money left over.
I don't, I only have about $800 left, um, in the, in the budget, so I wouldn't be able to do, like, the pizza party we wanted to do in October, wouldn't be able to do the Christmas party.
Oh, okay, so I thought you had this factored in here, you have $700 for December, and you're showing a total of 4498, so I thought that was the total for the whole year. That's not the case, then?
Uh, it's the total for the year 2013.
Right.
Yeah, and so, because I had some when I started, I had some money when I started this in February.
Okay, so we're changing the date from May to August?
August, yes.
From August to...
So, this will go from this August, or, yeah, yeah, I'll request another grant next August.
One more question. How did you support these expenditures prior to the time you're getting $5,000 from us?
Well, I had some money left over, and then, um, I have, I haven't reimbursed myself yet for June, July, and August.
Well, my question is, um, we now are supporting you 100%. Before that, we supported $1,000, 20%.
Yeah, it was before Bob Novak.
Yeah, what, what has changed?
I don't understand your question.
Uh, the question is, we're changing our support from 1,000 to 5,000, that's five times as much.
No, you had 5,000 last year, with, under Dr. Bob.
Did we?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the past two years.
Okay, then, the submission, okay, I see it now, yeah, okay.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing now, roll call.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, new business. Uh, review, annual audit draft, and financial report. Any questions or concerns there was, and did leave some changes to grants that she caught, and those are made today by Klein Hall CPAs, and are there any other questions, concerns?
Yes. Now, if you look at the second page here, schedule of findings and responses, do they...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, where do you see this? Under 213-1 finding?
Yeah.
Okay, that's page three, basically.
There's no number on mine.
Well, no, I'm just counting, because they're back, the first one's back-to-back.
Do they know that the board sees everything from the mental health board meetings?
Yes.
Do they know that one of the staff of the mental health is a trustee of the township?
They know.
They do?
Yeah. Everything, everything is put in, and you can ask Les McDonald, everything is put in separate drawer like they want it, okay?
No, I'm saying, does the auditor know this?
Yes, yes.
Well, he doesn't write like it.
So, they're still saying that we are not providing enough guidance or governance to the mental...
Yes, I guess. I don't know what more we can do.
Well, he...
You know, I'm, I'm, what I'm thinking in the back of my mind is that maybe he wants us to sign it, only one person to sign it checks out, and we talked about that before, and we, you know, says, "No, let the treasurer of the mental health board do it, as long as we get all the paperwork," you know, every month.
Well, he wants their accounting to be handled by...
Inside.
...our accountants.
Yeah.
That's one thing.
And for us to approve expenses...
You mean by Damati?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, by Damati, okay.
And he also wants us to approve expenses before they're paid. I don't know how that could work, because...
Yeah, you can't.
We would have to approve them, then they would have to be sent here, and if that happened, just the payments to the agencies would get really messed up.
Well, you kind of know what you're gonna pay the agencies, but anything else?
It's mostly contractual, I mean, the agency...
Oh, okay, yeah, that's right, yeah, depending on the amount of people there.
Didn't we look, didn't we look into this and decide that was why we needed their financial statements and all the costs and everything else?
Right, but they don't want that.
So we would not have to approve, but we had all the records of what they were doing.
Right, they're saying it's...
That's what I said earlier.
Yeah, and the auditing firm is saying, "There's no governance from us over that. We're not really approving it, we're just having the..."
Right.
"...data of everything they're doing."
Maybe the first step we ought to take is approve the financial statements that they send to us each month.
So that's after the fact.
What was frustrating?
It is after the fact, but it's...
That's after the fact.
But it's at least something that the board would do.
Still, we're approving it.
Yeah.
What's frustrating is that this came in, like, on Friday, I think.
We don't do that, we don't do that with our own expenses.
They, they started late this year.
They did?
Yeah.
'Cause we usually have a round...
I can't remember the date, but I, I kept saying, "Have you heard anything from the auditors tomorrow, Andrew?" No, no. "Oh, yeah, they're gonna come in," and I can't even remember what date they started, but, anyway, go on.
I just don't know what else we can do, other than, I mean, that might be helpful.
I think it would.
But, and it's not...
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, we can't do that with our budget.
Right, so why should they?
So how can we pre-approve or approve, approve their budget or whatever after the fact? We can't do that here with ours, and now we're gonna, so, so that's governance? They already spent the money? Okay, we approve it.
Okay, what did you, what do you suggest?
I, I don't have the answer to that, I thought we had it resolved when they gave us their financial statements, where every penny that they spent was...
Right, right.
...gave us that, but it was not approved, no, but we now had a record of everything that they did. Now, I don't know, what does the township rules say? Do we have to approve everything they do?
We should, or almost everything.
Do other townships do that?
That's realistic.
Oh, it's realistic, but do other townships do that?
I think it depends on the township.
Yeah.
I don't, I think that they've picked up on this, and this is something that they consider to be done.
I think as a first step, I know you don't agree with this, but I think as a first step, we ought to approve the expenditure report that they send to us each month by the trustees, by this township.
But they're, they're gonna be spending the money.
They're gonna spend it, but we're approving it.
Okay.
We can at least question it.
Okay, basically, approving their financial statement is what you're saying.
But we have no governance over what they're spending it on, we're just approving after the fact.
Yeah, what they already spent it on.
After the fact.
You know what they spend money on? We have the agencies that are under contract, the consultant that's under contract, and the recording secretary, and aside from that, there's very little.
You of all people that go through these financial statements and warrants and everything else and says, "We can't do this unless it's approved," now you're saying, "Well, we just spent it on this, we just spent it on that." We're either on the same page with this, or, you know, we aren't, but I mean, I don't, I don't see, I, yes, I think we should approve it, but if it has to be approved, it has to be approved before they spend the money, period.
It doesn't have to be, we would do it.
The mental health...
Well, that's what I ask, is it in the township rules, do we have to approve the expenditures of the mental health board?
The mental health...
That was my question.
The mental health board is a separate governing body, he doesn't agree with that, but if you looked at the statute, you would see that.
That's all I'm asking. If the statute says it's an independent governing body...
Makes it a separate governing body.
Right, then it's fine to approve their stuff after, after they spend the money, if they are a separate governing body, then it's okay.
That's what we believe, because that's how we read the law.
Okay.
They don't read it that way.
Well, then...
So he's gonna always give us a hard...
So, so what do we have to do? Go back to Cowan and say, "Who's, how, how do you interpret this? Are we gonna get a third interpretation of the statute?" I don't know.
The auditing firm says...
No, I don't, I, I don't know what you're saying, Wayne. I just, we have to be on the same page with everything.
How significant do you consider this issue, is I think what's important, how significant is it?
I consider it significant to the, to the point where what does the statute say we have to do? If the statute says we have to approve these expenditures before they spend the money, then that's what we have to do. If it doesn't, then they're wrong, then we're getting the financial statements, and that's fine, if it's a separate governing body...
Well, that's what Mia said.
She said, "That's how we interpret it," but that's not how they interpret it.
Well, we're not sure that they even read that.
Yeah.
That's why I just asked, I'll go back to my...
We did that.
Do we go to Cowan and ask him? "How, how do you interpret this law? You're the attorney."
We had...
How do we approve their expenditures before spending, is what you said?
Do we have to?
We had an opinion from an attorney that we gave them last year...
Okay.
...that essentially said that we could do what...
Who's we?
The mental health board.
Okay.
We could do what we're doing, and they still said, "I don't know, we don't like that."
Well, you've already got an attorney's opinion, then.
Yeah.
I would trust an attorney's opinion over the auditors, because he's just trying to make everything more clear, more clear, more clear, you know?
Well, who can, uh...
Well, I'll, I'll email it. Let me ask you this question, is the statute that vague that we can't come to a bottom line as to whether we are required to approve their expenditures before they spend the money? Is it that vague, that it can't be determined?
I think so.
I will give you a copy of that letter from last year, so I would take a look at it before you call Cowan, Cowan, you know? Probably...
If, if the statute proves that it's a separate governing body, then we don't have a problem. I think we should get the financial statements and approve them, but if they're a separate governing body, we don't need to do it.
Okay, that was one, my next point, if we're ready to move on.
Okay.
Uh, behind that, on the second part of that page, detailed capital asset records, and they made a big deal about this.
They sure did.
We noted township does not presently maintain... What do you mean? We did that special, we hired that firm, where is that report? Didn't they see it? I saw a report on this, I don't know, several, several months ago, but we did this.
And if they didn't find it or asked, questioned us, how are we gonna know until it shows up in here?
Well, it should be in the office somewhere, because...
Oh, yeah.
I saw it and went through it. It was because of his recommendation last year that we went ahead and did it.
You know, they, these were new people that I didn't recognize when they came in. He wasn't here very often, so, you know, maybe, you know, they're just doing standard stuff, I don't know.
Well, I would pick that out and give it to them, because there's a separate sheet in here, they considered this material.
They sure did.
Where is that? Do you remember? Well...
Significant accounting practices or estimates?
They're under the, it's, um, on the fourth page.
Yeah, okay, well, I have it on page two of the, behind the table of contents.
The back side.
It's on the back side, schedule of finding and responses.
Adverse opinion on governmental activities, management has not maintained detailed records of the township's capital assets.
We, we did exactly what they wanted us to do last year.
Well, I'm telling you, this is what he put in here.
Yeah.
Says, "In accordance with county principles, blah, 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 the financial position of Riverside Township as of March 31, 2013," and changes where they're after that. This is...
Oh, oh, yeah.
This says, "Do not fairly present the financial position," because this is not, they did not see this report.
Because of what, yeah?
Because they didn't see that report on capital assets.
Well, then, they missed it.
So they need to see it, and they need to...
And they didn't ask for it.
Was that, was that compiled after this date, possibly? Oh, no, 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 it was done before they started working on this, I'm almost positive. I don't think it was before March that I saw that report. Yeah, but they didn't start working on the audit until, what?
April, May?
Yeah, probably May.
Yeah, May too late.
Did, uh, did we have these problems when Sullivan Fox was on?
No, no, we didn't, yeah.
No, we didn't.
That's all I wanna know.
I know what you're gonna recommend, I'll...
You better...
Okay, so you'll dig...
Why?
He knows who I'm gonna recommend this.
And I'll vote for that.
So you'll dig that out and get it to them, and then they should make the changes there.
Okay, what's it called again, so I got it exactly, kid?
Well, they, they, detailed capital asset records.
Established by, he was an appraiser, right?
I think so, yeah. I mean, it was a lengthy document, and I remember making a note when I sent it back saying, "We need to keep track of anything that we purchase beyond this date so that we can update this as time goes on."
Okay.
Okay, I don't know if they care, it's not a big deal, but there's a typographical error on, these pages aren't numbered. There's a page that says, "Communication with those charged with governance," it's the next page after that, not a big deal, it's the board liability in the 1, 2, 3, 4 paragraph.
Where is that, do you know where?
Wait a minute, I'd have to find that, what page is it?
It's on that page, in the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph.
1, 2, 3...
What's a 4th paragraph statement?
Management's estimate of the IMRF actuarial.
Okay.
See it?
Liability?
Yeah. I don't see it.
I don't...
It's on the second page.
What?
Communication with those charged with governance to...
...in the fourth paragraph now.
You have that, and then go to the page after that, and it's...
Did you get it?
No.
It's very...
Maybe I don't have a...
Why didn't they number these pages? I see they didn't, they started this...
Here?
...after the table of contents, but then this whole thing before, there's no page numbers.
I know, that's right.
I thought it was on this page, 1, 2, 3...
Right here.
Oh, right.
There, oh, I see, I get it.
Okay, so then on the...
Thank you.
Next page after that, and there's the reference to, we have issued an adverse opinion at the last, second to last paragraph from the, their signature. See that?
Yes.
We issued an adverse opinion of the government-wide financial statements.
Where is that? Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I got that one.
Yeah, so you have that marked.
Yeah.
So we need to get that out of there, 'cause it's not true, and that other page I pointed out to, and it's again on the page that's titled, "Independent Auditor's Report." A few more pages back, it says, "Independent Auditor's Report."
Back?
No, beyond what we were just looking at.
Okay, Independent Auditor's Report, okay.
The last paragraph.
No, those are numbered.
These are numbered here.
Yeah, okay, we believe that.
See, so that has to be fixed.
Where? Okay, what's the, what's the...
The last paragraph on the adverse audit opinion.
It's about the adverse opinion again.
Oh.
It has to come out, and then on the next page, we were just looking at that actually, on that page.
On page two.
What do you want, done there, Ian? Should be done?
Well, if we're gonna furnish him that, those capital asset records, all of this should be corrected, 'cause he's saying, he's giving us an adverse opinion because he thinks we don't have that capital asset record, and we do.
Did we give it?
What?
Did we give it to them?
Well, you know, they, I don't know, they should've asked.
Well, they, oh, they've asked for something.
Plus, they're gonna make a note.
If they're gonna make a note like that, yeah.
You're sitting in room three, two or three of them, but they're still, when they need something, they come over and they ask.
Right, so they should...
But not mind readers, what they...
No, they're the professionals. They know what they're looking for.
Right, and they should have asked if we had any type of report like this.
Absolutely.
Instead of mentioning it three times without asking us for a...
When is their term up with this?
I mean, we've done that.
Rich.
What?
When is their term up with this?
Well, that depends on the board.
Soon as this is over with, to correct this.
Okay.
And we don't have a contract with them.
This one here, just something on, yeah, that, and then this paragraph.
I think we should consider looking elsewhere.
This paragraph here. Both of these. Oh, it's not the last. It's not this one here, Rich. No, it's about all those. It's this last paragraph here. We believe this because that's based on their adverse opinion.
You got these changes? You can just give it to me.
And then on the subsequent page.
I can't. You're going too quick for me to find this.
It's that one, it's here, and it's here. Yeah. You got that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I had the changes on who we support.
Why, Diane, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Had the changes on who we support, you know, the people we've given grants to this year, and some changes there.
Hey, Jay.
Which supposedly they corrected.
Well, I had this, yes, I had this in my...
Yeah, those are the changes in the morning.
Yeah, right, I've got this.
In the beginning. That, from yesterday morning.
What correction are you making on that?
Please, did you pick this up in your mailbox?
Yeah. What?
So you have, well, there were some adds and subtracts. There was a few additions and a few subtracts. Yeah, so this one, this, this sheet we got in our mailbox is the revised of just that page. Yeah. And then I had one other comment on page 18 to the notes.
We're not numbered here, as you pointed out.
No, we are.
No, we're numbered on the bottom there.
Now, you're on page...
Oh, eight, okay.
But this stuff, the management discussion and analysis, that's really important. I mean, in a, you know... Anyway, page 18, the last paragraph. The township owns approximately .75 miles, originally constructed over 25 years ago. And that's probably true, but we redid the roads less than 25 years ago.
But they were constructed more than 25. The roads, I mean, actually were made. That, you know, that, what we did was maintenance.
Well, the question in my mind is, you know, if we're looking at depreciation, are we depreciating, I mean, shouldn't we be depreciating the roads that were repaired? Because they were all, I mean, I don't know. It's a question.
Those, that, I don't think it was...
I'll mention it to them.
I don't think it was capitalized. I think that was an expense.
Yeah, you're right.
So that's, you think that's okay?
I don't, I don't think repairs would come under capitalizing. It would be an expense. And that's how I interpret this wording, is .75 miles of roads originally constructed.
Well, that's what it says.
Right. So therefore, that's what, that is what's been depreciated, fully depreciated. Any repairs wouldn't be considered.
Okay.
Just ignore this one?
Yeah, ignore that. Bring up your, your recommendation next month.
I think everybody should. But I will.
Okay, any other...
Any other, Diane?
Concerns, questions?
No, that's all I do.
Okay.
Okay. If, we're going to have to hold a special meeting now. We'll get these changed, you'll see what he says, then we're going to have to hold a special meeting. We don't have to advertise it in the paper. No?
Why?
Why not?
That's the law. We don't have to. We can just put it in the newsletter or hang it up on the board and what it's going to be about. So we don't have to advertise it in the newspaper.
Is that a new rule?
Well, the last special meeting one was when?
Wasn't that, wasn't that an emergency meeting, more or less? It was about the employment situation, remember?
It was about employee, right?
Yeah.
Was that the meeting we had in room four over there?
Yes.
With the donut holes?
With room three, you mean?
Uh, room three, rather.
With who?
With the donut holes.
The donut holes. I double-checked that.
Yeah, I didn't think you would. Forget it. Well, I don't know.
As long as...
Well, I mean, I'll print it.
I would double-check, double-check, that's all.
I would, I would double-check it, Rich. And we have to, we have to hold a special meeting, fine, but I would just make sure we're in accordance with the rules.
See, we're having a special right here.
Okay. Yeah.
Meetings. Notice of special meetings, number page 94.
Well...
Public notice of a special meeting, except an emergency meeting, along with the agenda for the meeting, must be given at least 48 hours before the meeting by posting of the notice and agenda at the principal office of the governmental body and the meeting location.
There you go.
And by furnishing the notice and agenda to the registered news media.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to print with it, we just notify it.
No, you put it on the board up there.
If the township maintains a website, the notice must also be posted on the website.
That's silly. If you don't have a website, you don't have to post it. That makes sense.
Okay.
Do we all agree with what she just read?
Yes.
Yeah.
I just brought it out there. And we have a website, so we have to put it on the website.
You don't think it has to be published in a paper?
It doesn't say it has to be published in the meeting.
Listen to, listen to what she said.
And by, let's see. Public notice of a special meeting, except an emergency meeting, along with an agenda for the meeting, must be given at least 48 hours before the meeting by posting of the notice and agenda at the principal office of the governmental body and the meeting location, and by furnishing the notice and agenda to the registered news media.
You got that?
Yeah. It just says furnish the notice and agenda.
Yeah, that's the notice. It's not printing it. We're having a special meeting for corrections on the audit.
I think he's interpreting that as saying the news media, that's why you have to publish it?
Right.
That's what it is.
Right. But we don't have to publish in the paper. All we have to do is call them and notify them that there's going to be a special meeting.
Well, it says furnish the notice and agenda.
Yeah, give them the, yeah.
Yeah, fax it to them.
Yeah. But we don't have to print it in the paper, spend money to print it in the paper, wait. You used to, but not anymore.
Not anymore?
Run it by Colin.
Okay.
As long as we're spending money.
Okay.
Do we know when we want that special meeting, or...
Well, we have to get the information...
Do I hear a motion to have a special meeting? A certain date, I will call everyone, everybody, a good day and time.
Yeah, but after...
When these are all made and changed.
When, when, right, when the changes are made to the audit draft.
Right.
Yes, okay.
Do I hear a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next one is community band virtuality sheet music.
Before you go on, just a note though, Rich, you, you know, of course, that this has to be filed by the end of September.
Yeah, that's why we have to have a special meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Community band virtuality, they're, they're getting different songs that aren't just all religious. So it's coming out of their budget anyway. Do I hear the board's, any question, or do I hear a motion to approve?
Are they looking for the 220 bucks?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make the motion. Or we grant them the...
No, we don't grant, allow them.
Oh, allow them, I'm sorry.
From their budget.
Excuse me, allow them $220 from their budget for their sheet music, holiday sheet music.
Any other question, or second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
For the North Riverside Chili Cook-Off, they requested again this year that we supply them with the, those bouncy toys, the castle, the bouncy house, and the slide bounce house.
Is this the Fiesta Blast Reynolds? Is that, that they're the suppliers of this?
And it looks like the total, total is...
$385?
No, $569 total equipment, plus the $385 setup.
It was the total discounts of $184. That comes out to $385. Take the discounts off.
Oh.
Yeah, so total is $385.
$385.
So it's $385.
Okay.
All right, then I'll make a bouncy motion to pay the Fiesta Blast Reynolds $385 for the, excuse me, equipment for the chili, whatever that is.
Chili cook-off.
Chili cook-off.
I will second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
There, in the FYI, there's a memo from Colin about the tax objections for 205, 206. That's, you know, and in the past, it's going to cost more to fight it than it would to pay it, according to mature, in most townships. Second, um...
We know, because we might just comment, since the levy is coming up soon, and he mentions about, you know, this excess accumulation, we ought to maybe step back and take a look at that and try to, try to do the levy in such a way that we don't encounter this problem the next time. Now, he offered...
Didn't we lower the levy last time, too? Wait.
It seems like we did.
Yeah. You know, this is a group of people that they're going to object to no matter what, okay?
Well, but there's a calculation.
Yeah.
So if you went through the calculation, presumably you would, you know, be sure then that you didn't exceed.
In fact, we didn't increase the, the...
Levy at all, I don't think.
The levy at all, right?
Right.
Did we leave mental health toward the same? Or did we give them an increase?
No, we took the...
No, they, they took the max.
Which was not an increase. I mean, they took the max, that's what we've been giving them, is the max?
Cost of living.
The cost of living, okay.
Yeah, whatever, I don't remember what it was last year.
Okay.
Three point something, it sticks out, 3.2, so this sticks out by my, for some reason. All right, probably. All right, Mary?
That's very close to what it was, the three something.
Okay, I got an email from a resident. We're going to have to be more careful about who we give grants out to make sure that they are not any religious.
Make sure they're what?
Not connected to any religious organizations. The emails are back, so I guess we will be very careful.
Do we have, do we have sufficient background checks on these people coming in, coming, you know, they're asking for money? I mean, I don't know. I mean, that's run by you, you know, the supervisor.
Well, yeah, they, there are very few that have changed over the years that come in.
But they have to prove something, right?
Yeah.
And so you follow through on all?
Yeah. You know, except for, you know, a lot of times, new life, oh, I don't know, you know.
Well, I just, you know, want to see if there's anything in place, and then we can cheap the system, that's all. When I see this, you know, concerns about a recipient, I don't know, maybe we should toughen it up a little.
Okay.
I think that, you know, their objection is that this program's based in religion, you know, so...
What, Mary, do you want to marry?
Oh, I think their, her objection is that this program is based on religion.
Yeah.
No, no, I understand, but my point was that if there's an objection to that, you know, is this going to be something else about, do we have enough stopping points?
They see, they see things differently. Visitors' remarks? No visitors? Approval of warrants?
We have a motion that the board approve and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrants, September 2013, in the amount of $9,486.57, as presented to the board this 10th day of September 2013.
Second motion.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried. The next, a motion that the board ratify and approve payment of amounts indicated on the following warrants, utility warrant, September 2013, in the amount of $956.89, payroll warrant, September 2013, in the amount of $16,134.32, health warrant, September 2013, in the amount of $1,466.21, monthly filings, September 2013, in the amount of 1,000, wait a second.
No, no.
Six thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Can't read my... Yep, 6,767.56, grants, September 2013, in the amount of $2,708.63, general assistance warrant, September 2013, in the amount of $4,800, and food pantry warrant, September 2013, in the amount of $75.3, all of the above is presented to the board this 10th All of the above is presented to the board this tenth day of September 2013.
Second the motion.
Uh, second.
I did.
Oh. Any questions, concerns? Hearing the roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, no report or comments from me.
Can I, um, before we, I, I just have a question. Should we consider, I'm asking you, should we consider revisiting our option to have automatic deposit on checks in case something was wrong?
We just did that.
Maybe we just did that. No.
Two or three months ago.
Yeah.
Automatic deposits.
Is, is, is it something we should consider though?
No.
You know?
Because one, it's costly, two...
Well, I, I asked Margie, I think it's a buck forty a check.
Yeah.
And there's about fourteen people that could go automatic deposit between...
If they all want it.
Huh?
If they all want it.
Yeah, tell them they're gonna take it. That's how, that's how other places do it. You're on automatic deposit, period. You know, I don't know, you have to have a bank though, because it has to be put someplace. So, I mean, it's not an, I mean, just in case, you know, something goes wrong, you know, like you got sick there for a while and I mean, to relieve you of that problem too. I don't know. I'm asking if that should be considered or something.
But they all have to be approved first, like now. And you're gonna get it later, later than what you get it now.
I'll follow.
You're gonna get your, let's say, your check, you're gonna get that later than
Why?
you'll pick it up tomorrow, because it has to be approved and then...
And then they push the button and it, and it goes in.
Yeah, and then...
It goes into your account, whatever account you set up. You have to bring the paperwork in from your bank. And then it goes, whatever date you specify for it to go in, it should go in.
I don't like direct deposits, I'm sorry, you know, it's...
Well...
Well, you're suggesting it's a requirement, not your choice.
Well, most places do, most places that have automatic deposits, I mean, it'll say, well, you gotta do it. I mean, this is the way our company works and you, you have to do it. I don't know how that applies here, but what I'm saying is, as, as a stopgap, in case there's an emergency or something goes wrong, because you're the only one that can sign checks. You know, so I'm asking, is that something we, you know, we should consider in case any supervisor wouldn't be able to sign it?
Well, that takes care of maybe payroll, but you got everything else that you can't do.
Right, but payroll, people are expecting to be paid on their payday. You know, and, and I believe that whatever is the designated day that it goes in there, they can control that from the office here, that it goes into your account that day. I mean, even social security, they do, they will not send you a check. That's it. You have a bank account.
They have a how many millions compared to?
Huh? You have to have a bank account.
Four, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen people.
Thirteen or fourteen last night, that's at the council. That's, that's why I'm asking. And I think it's a buck forty a check, something like that.
And sometimes Fran hires people on a
Temporary.
Need, need basis.
Well, they, they don't have to be included.
They wouldn't be.
They wouldn't be included. I'm just saying, it might be something to consider again. I'm, I'm asking.
I'll look into it again.
Okay.
When are the, uh, other employees paid? Are they like the first and the fifteenth or the...
Yeah, the first and the fifteenth, and, um, that's the custodians. And then, um, along with Margie Andrew.
Yeah, the office staff.
Yeah.
The office staff.
And then France people are paid at the, like, a week before the end of the month.
Oh, okay.
Are they paid once a month?
They're only paid once a month.
Are they paid once a month?
Once a month.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
No second.
Are we voting on that?
Hold on a second.
Aye.
How about those against?
Thank you.
Thank you for...